Regular meeting number forty-eight will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
Pastor Paul Timmons, please lead us in pledge.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening council is pleased and honored to have Pastor Scotty Aaron, Senior Pastor of Friendship Missionary Baptist Church, to pray with us again this evening. Pastor, welcome back to council.
O Lord, our God, how excellent is thy name. God, we thank you for this day that you have given us. We ask that you bless this gathering on tonight. Bless the local, state, and national government. May our work be pleasing in thy sight. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Clerk, please call the row. Thank you, Pastor.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to dismiss the reading of the journal? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions by members of council, starting with Councilmember Elizabeth Brown?
Yes, Council President, I do have a resolution tonight, and as I read it, I would like to invite Cam Williams to the podium. I have Resolution 0276-X-2019 to commend and thank Cam Williams for his advocacy on behalf of restored citizens as the founder of People Objective. Cam, thank you for your work championing the rights of formerly incarcerated individuals with People Objective. You grew up in central Ohio and previously served as the Director of the Center for Employment Opportunities in Columbus, and we are grateful for your work and advocacy. Earlier this year, Cam launched the Run for People, a campaign where he ran 3,187 miles from Los Angeles to New York in 100 days to raise awareness of the stigma surrounding those with criminal records. Let's take a moment to reflect on what an incredible feat of stamina and energy that that is. I know you are creating a documentary around your run to share the stories of people returning home from incarceration while also focusing on groups and employers who are working to create a fair chance at employment for restored citizens. In Columbus, we recognize that a criminal record is a barrier to employment for many right here in our own city. We know that knocking down that barrier not only helps individuals who need to support their families, but it helps make our neighborhoods and entire community stronger when everyone has access to employment. With that goal in mind, the city launched the Restoration Academy in 2012, a program that provides paid work experience on the job training and supportive services for restored citizens. And in 2017, we added the hiring of disadvantaged workers such as restored citizens to the factors considered for companies who bid on city construction contracts to become pre-qualified. However, no one on this stage or in this room, to my knowledge, has run 3,000 miles in 100 days. So, thank you so much for your advocacy, bringing attention to this important work. Before I turn the microphone over to you to share about your cross-country journey and ongoing efforts with People Objective, I would like to move for adoption.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
The microphone is yours.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for being here, too. I feel a lot of honor being here in front of you and being recognized. Thank you very much. Oh, man, over the past six years, I've worked with people coming out of incarceration, and I've been working by calling employers, telling them that we're all people, and you can have a diverse workforce that can bring a lot of value to your business. And now employers are more open to it with the efforts of other nonprofits in Columbus and the city hiring people as well. And recently, I realized that, of course, employers are going to be more open to hiring people now, partially because of our efforts, but also because the economy is really good. And I realize that the first people they may stop hiring when the economy might not be so great will probably be people coming home from incarceration. And so, I chose to have a bigger platform by running across the country to try to get more ears to the issue. And so, the Run for the People was to advocate for people and to reduce the stigma attached to people coming home from incarceration. And so, that's what we're doing. And so, throughout the run, we're filming a documentary that we're hoping to get into film festivals across the country as a way to give a voice to people that we met from L.A. to New York City to share the barriers that they're facing alongside of a lot of solutions such as the city council the city of Columbus is creating for people that are that have some felony records. And so, the main message that I like to share with everybody that I learned across the run, the day before I got to Columbus, I was in Indiana, and I chose to run 100 miles home to be here for my brother's birthday in time. And on the run home, 100 miles in one day is a big effort, and you get tired at mile 20, mile 40, but it kind of hit me at mile 60 that like my knees started buckling, I was exhausted from the heat that day. And what really got me through was my mom calling me saying, hey, I got a warm meal for you when you get here. I got a nice bed, my friends and family coming out to run the last 20 miles with me, and I realized the importance of being welcomed home. And so, through all my work, working with people coming out of incarceration, I'd never realized how important it is to just provide open arms and open heart. And so, everyone here today can do that tomorrow. If it's someone coming home from college, someone coming home from the county jail, from prison, anyone that you see on the street, just giving a smile and a hug goes a long way. And that's what really helped me get to Columbus on that 100-mile-a-day journey, 100-mile journey that day. So, thank you all very much, and I hope that the message of being able to run across the country just for some other someone else might make you do something tomorrow that might make people feel more welcome, too. Thank you very much.
I have one resolution this evening. I would like to ask Chief Fire, Chief O'Connor, Chief Dave Walton, firefighter Marv Robinson, firefighter Trina Kane, and firefighter Jay Sierra if they would please begin to make their way to the podium. I have 0275-X-2019, a resolution to declare the week of October 6 through 12, 2019, to be Fire Prevention Week in Columbus, Ohio. Whereas the city of Columbus, Ohio is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Columbus, whereas the 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape: Plan and Practice Your Escape," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fires. And whereas when the smoke alarm sounds, Columbus residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety. And whereas Columbus residents should make a home escape plan, drawing a map of each level of the home, showing all doors and windows. And whereas Columbus residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Columbus residents should make sure everyone in the home knows how to call 911 or the local emergency number from a cellphone or a neighbor's phone. And whereas Columbus residents should get out, stay out, never going back inside the home for people, pets, possessions. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Columbus that this council does hereby proclaim October 6 through the 12th as Fire Prevention Week. Throughout this weekend urges, again, all residents of Columbus to be aware of the surroundings, look for available ways out of an event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and support the many public safety efforts of the Columbus Division of Fire and Emergency Medical Services during the week, Fire Prevention Week of 2019. If there are no comments from my colleagues, I move for adoption.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
At this time, Chief O'Connor and Chief Walton, the floor is yours.
I want to thank President Harden, Councilmember Brown, President Pro Tem. We want to thank you and all council members for recognizing Fire Prevention Week and the safety that we're ready to provide. But I can tell you, while we respond very quickly on every alarm in the city of Columbus, smoke alarms respond faster, and that's why smoke alarms are the lifesaving thing that everyone needs to have in their homes. What I'd like to do now is turn the podium over to Chief Walton and his staff, who can tell you about some of the programs we have that are totally free for our residents of Columbus.
Chief Walton.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate the opportunity, the opportunity to highlight fire safety in the city of Columbus. And I thought perhaps the best way to express the good work that our Public Outreach Office does is to let some of the members who work in that good office talk about some of the events that they work on. So with that, I'm going to have firefighter Marvin Robinson start by some of the things that he works on.
Thank you, Council President, council members. As part of the Columbus Division of Fire, we are doing a public outreach in which we reach out to the communities to let them know that we care for them and also that they are safe regarding their fire safety, home safety, and escape plans. Through our federal grant program, we are presently installing approximately 1,171 smoke alarms to our homes and residents. Out of the total of 1,171, 500 are homes. With the carbon monoxide alarms, we have installed a total of 567 CO alarms, and the home's totaling 286. As part of our program, we want to do that there's important for them to be out and get out of the house safely, and these are all some of the things that we're doing in fire prevention and outreach in the community to let them know we have concern for their safety and Fire Prevention Week. Thank you.
Let me share a few words in Spanish. Para los hispanohablantes que viven en esta ciudad, tenemos un programa de alarme de humo y también monóxido de carbono. Todo este programa es gratuito. Si necesitan estas alarmas, pueden llamar a 614-645-777. Gracias.
Yes, I know we put in smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors, but I also do a lot of programs in the community, and that's my primary job to teach our children, to teach the community how to get out the house safe. And the biggest thing we teach them is, once that smoke alarm goes off, get out the house and stay out. Have a plan, and that's one way that we all can be safe. Thank you.
Chief, would you at least acknowledge we have a variety of firefighters who are present? If you at least call their names and have them come up and identify themselves?
Yeah, I think the best thing for them is to come up. This is actually Station One. They're just right down the street, and actually, they thought they were getting an alarm that they were able to stay. But I'd like, it's headed today by the Deputy Chief of Chief Sean Cozer, and he can come up and introduce his staff.
Thank you again for the recognition, Council President, members of the council. I'm so proud to work with these individuals because they not only respond to emergencies, but they do their part to keep us safe through the fire prevention activities. We have Battalion Chief Dave Witowski, Rick Starkey, John Snyder, Spangler, sorry, new. Lieutenant Miller, and Joe Varga. Thank you very much.
And if I may, for all of you, yesterday was, remember some fallen firefighters over this past year. We've had three firefighters who expired this year, so a moment of silence and respect for those three firefighters, please. If there are no further comments, Chief, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Doran.
No resolution this evening. Just want to remind folks my office hours this month. We'll be holding ours this Thursday, October 10, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. at the Whitestone Branch of the Columbus Metropolitan Library. As you know, every month I feature a different pizza place from the neighborhood we're in. This month will be Dante's Pizza from Clintonville. So, if folks are available and want to come by and chat, we'll be there on Thursday. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Favour.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, we have Resolution 279-2019 to honor and congratulate the Afrocentric Personal Development Shop Incorporated, or APDS, for their 31 years of service and dedication to domestic violence awareness and prevention in the city of Columbus. I'd like to invite Mr. Jerry Saunders, Chief Executive Officer of APDS, to the podium. The month of October is recognized as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic violence is a national issue that impacts men, women, children, and families across this country. Established in 1988, the Afrocentric Personal Development Shop is committed to having a continued positive impact on this critical and urgent societal problem. APDS is an innovative behavioral healthcare center specializing in prevention, treatment, and recovery of substance abuse and domestic violence intervention education. We are proud today to acknowledge the work this organization has been doing throughout the Columbus community for the past 31 years. Mr. Saunders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden, Councilwoman Favour, and the rest of the council folks, and to the cabinet, and to our city attorney. Thank you for this honor, not so much just for APDS, but the seriousness of the issue of domestic violence. We've been working on it for like 22 years, and the reason we got started was because we were doing substance abuse, and we noticed so much domestic violence going on with that, so we started addressing that. We saw that a lot of our clients were being dropped off and picked up by the victims. So that let us know that these issues were still going on at home, and it's impacting the children. And that's the major reason why we get involved in this. We're celebrating this coming Thursday. We invite all of you over to the boathouse at the Confluence, 11:30 to 1:00. We recognize some folks and the work that they've done. But I would be remiss if I didn't take this challenge on as a citizen of central Ohio here, that for Columbus, the size of the community that we are, we don't have a major event recognizing domestic violence, October's Domestic Violence Month. So I would just encourage all of us to get together. I'll do whatever I can to help spearhead this. I know that our city attorney, I see your emails, you're involved with the domestic violence piece, that we need to get a bunch of folks together so that we can address this in a major way, because a lot of it has to do with male privilege, and it's institutionalized. And we've got to address it with our young men and young women, our children, to really have a very strong impact on this. I don't, I get serious about this because it is a serious issue, but that's the way we prevent it, by getting to the folks at an early age, and I would just challenge us to try to do some type of major awareness event as a community come 2020. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Don't leave yet.
Don't leave yet.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders, for your work and your advocacy. I truly appreciate the work that you're doing in your community, and I know I don't stand alone, won't speak for my council, my fellow colleagues, but we truly appreciate your commitment to spreading the word and just making people aware of this prevalent issue in our community. At this point, I'd move for adoption.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders.
All right, thank you.
That is all, President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I'd like to invite Dr. Celeshi Asfal, Executive Director of Ethiopian Taiwahido Social Services, ETSS, and the ETSS team to the podium as I introduce ordinance number 0278-X-2019 to recognize and celebrate Ethiopian Taiwahido Social Services and their Fifth Annual Evening of Promise. ETSS is hosting its Fifth Annual Evening of Promise event on Saturday, October 12, 2019. The Evening of Promise is designed to honor community champions who have been allies of ETSS and support ETSS in working with the immigrant and refugee communities in central Ohio. ETSS is a community-based organization that helps new arrivals from all countries establish roots and gain self-sufficiency in Columbus through programs and services that encourage community integration, sustained employment, education, health, and strong families. ETSS provides services to both adults and children through employment and assistance, ESL courses, after-school programs, summer camps, and advocates for victims of domestic violence. As a matter of fact, in 2018, ETSS served over 10,000 individuals. The mission of ETSS is to be the focal point of integration for immigrants, refugee families, and low-income individuals in central Ohio in order to improve the quality of their lives. ETSS facilitates this integration through education, training, supportive services, and self-development opportunities, which leads to increased awareness of culture and heritage in central Ohio. ETSS, led by Dr. Celeshi, is well-respected in the central Ohio human services community and serves as an essential partner to the city of Columbus. Columbus City Council is thankful for the impactful work of ETSS as we recognize the importance of providing new Americans, immigrants, and refugees from all countries with the services and tools they need to feel at home in central Ohio. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus that this council does hereby recognize and celebrate Ethiopian Taiwahido Social Services and their Fifth Annual Evening of Promise in the city of Columbus. Dr. Celeshi, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, our dear friend, Councilmember Emmanuel Remy, for initiations his resolution, and Council President Shannon Harden, and members of the council, and I know you all, you are my friends, we work together for the community. I know how you're struggling to say "tawahido," which is an African, ancient African word meaning coming together as one, oneness, togetherness, collaboration partners. That's what it becomes, the center of our name, which is the soul of the organization. So, thank you so much. We are ETSS. We are overjoyed for accepting this resolution for the Ethiopian, the ETSS Evening of Promise recognition, because keeping the promise of Columbus, that's what Evening of Promise is, to welcome refugee immigrants, that is keeping the promise of Columbus, to help them facilitate their integration, to provide them training and supportive services so that they become healthy, self-reliant, contributing members of our society. That is what keeping the promise of Columbus. So, the Evening of Promise is really to, you know, to celebrate our champions, our advocates, our voices for our new Americans, to feel at home, to feel Columbus is your home, and also to support each other, to help each other. That's what the promise of Columbus. As you know, we serve specialized population, unique population, refugee immigrants. Refugees are survivors. Refugees are, you know, talented people, they have diverse thoughts and ideas, hardworking people, and you know that this city of Columbus understands our certain value of refugee immigrants. We really thank you for that, that really, Columbus is an open, smart, welcoming city, and this is because of your leadership. Thank you so much.
President Harden, Councilmember Remy, and council members, I'd just like to say a few words because, you know, we talked about promise and Columbus's promise to the people and residents of the city of Columbus, and I have to speak on the promise of Dr. Celeshi Asfal. I've been a board member since about 2007, I believe it is, and watched ETSS grow and his promise to the people, to the refugee and immigrant population, to truly make a difference. It shows in the work that he's been doing throughout so many years, and as you've seen ETSS grow and impact so many people, so many young people, so many older people, whether it be through after-school or whether it be through working with them through their skill sets to be able to get employment, and also with language barriers. His work with both city council and other entities to be able to continue funding has been truly amazing. I think it shows the passion for the work. So when you think about the Evening of Promise, and this is the fifth year for that, you know, I think about the potential. He sees the potential in every person that walks through the door to be able to really make a difference. He sees the possibilities, because when you speak with him, he's speaking in possibilities. And so, he wants, and in speaking with the people that he's working with and that this amazing team is working with, they talk about the possibilities of those that are coming from faraway lands to be able to come here to make Columbus their home. And then also talk about the progress. You know, often at times, it's not that perfection, but he continues to push for progress, and progress of not only his staff and working with them and making them better, but making the people that they are here to serve that much better. So, we appreciate the recognition, but also the partnership of city council. Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind, the rest of you, would you introduce yourselves and tell what role you play with the organization?
My name is Awatif Anor. I'm originally from Sudan, and I work with refugees and immigrants, the ESL, and employability skills, and help with their integration in the American culture and to be good citizens of both culture, their original culture and the United States.
Thank you.
My name is Johanna Hagos, and I do the in-school AMP program for 16 to 21.
Thank you.
My name is Emmanuel Mardaza. I'm an immigrant from Ethiopia. I lived here in Columbus for the past 21 years, and I'm the Director of Youth.
My name is Carrie Allen Hogan, and I am the Director of Development and Marketing for ETSS.
Good evening. My name is Tatiana Bojanovski. I am an immigrant from Macedonia, and I am working as a site coordinator on the east side with the adult program.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Schaefer, and I'm the Adult Services Manager.
Good evening. My name is Erosalim Tassama. I'm working as a community health services coordinator at ETSS.
Good evening. My name is Lord Samuel. I'm from Ethiopia. I'm working for ETSS as IT specialist.
Thank you very much to all of you. We appreciate all that you do for the community. You know, it's important that everyone recognize that we are a welcoming city, and it does start with our leadership, and we're working every day to make sure that that's a firm commitment from this city council. And so, supporting your work and all that you do for our community and the people that you bring into our community to make our city so culturally vibrant is very important to us, so thank you. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
That's all I have this evening, Council President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Harden. I have two resolutions this evening, and the first resolution is 282-X-2019, and it is to declare October of 2019 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Columbus and to recognize choices for victims of domestic violence for their ongoing efforts to raise awareness for domestic violence prevention in Columbus and central Ohio. I'm going to ask Suvarillo to please walk to the podium. Whereas domestic violence impacts men, women, and children of every age, background, and belief, nearly 1 in 3 women and 1 in 4 men in the United States have suffered abuse from an intimate partner. Whereas each year, 1 in 15 children are exposed to domestic violence, and 1/3 of women homicides result, female homicides result from domestic violence committed by an intimate partner. Last year, there were more than 17,259 domestic violence Last year, there were more than 17,259 domestic violence calls in Columbus and central Ohio, Whereas data from the CDC's National Intimate Partner and Sexual Violence Survey indicates that domestic violence can be diminished by educating and empowering communities to develop and maintain healthy relationship skills. Whereas Choices for Victims of Domestic Violence has a mission to interrupt the cycle of domestic violence by responding to those in need, by educating the community, and by advocating for social change. And whereas Choices is a part of the Lutheran Social Services Family of Programs and a domestic violence safe haven in Franklin County, offering 120 beds, a 24-hour crisis and information hotline, counseling services, support groups, legal and community advocates for those impacted by domestic violence. Whereas Choices provided shelter, safe shelter to over 900 people so far in fiscal year 2019, which equaled nearly 28,256 nights. In addition to the 24-hour hotline received more than 4,464 calls, 458 children received shelter, over 250 were served by the counseling programs, and more than 570 clients were helped by their legal advocates. Whereas educating communities on the necessity of developing and maintaining healthy relationships as well as providing safe shelter and support for those in need, Choices for Victims of Domestic Violence, along with its team of counselors and community and legal advocates, provides a beacon of hope for those currently in abusive relationships and acts as an inspiration for others who are committed to preventing domestic violence. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, this council does hereby express its appreciation regarding the importance of preventing domestic violence and hereby recognizes October of 2019 as domestic, National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Columbus. I move for adoption.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson. President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. Sue, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, for issuing that resolution for Domestic Violence Awareness Month and for Choices. Thank you, President Harden, for having me here tonight, as well as all council members and honored guests. It's remarkable tonight to stand here and listen to the other guests that have come before me and the great work that I hope not just Choices is recognized for, but the other partners in this city, the adult, or the, I'm sorry, the Afrocentric Personal Development Shop, ETSS, certainly City Attorney's Office, all of the great work that is being done in this community to address the needs of both the victim of domestic violence, the survivor, and those who are perpetrating violence in this community. All of us are working together to ensure that we are reaching people so that they know that there are services ready and available for them when they need it, that there is help at the end of a hotline phone call, that we can make certain people get to the places that they need to get what they need to end this cycle of violence. As I left to come here tonight, in our 120-bed shelter, we had 142 people residing with another family expected yet this evening. It is so important that we get in front of this, that we combat what is happening, not just in our community, but everywhere, and really begin to eliminate domestic violence through education, through prevention. And so your resolution tonight is another opportunity for us to talk about domestic violence and hopefully bring some awareness and an end. I've left you all the purple ribbons. Thank you so much for putting them on. I appreciate very much you allowing me to be here tonight.
Thank you. And Sue, can you please share if someone in the viewing or listening audience may be in need of shelter, what can they do?
So to access services for a victim of domestic violence, you can call our 24-hour crisis hotline. That number is 614-224-4663.
Thank you. And before you sit down, I do want to recognize certainly Jerry Saunders, who was up and was talking about what we should do with our children. And in a few minutes, I have another resolution that will be for girls. And it is very important that we begin to work with our girls and our boys to be able to identify what violence is. And, you know, and I know that we've had a number of conversations just with the Commission on Black Girls, but also just having conversations and reading data also about the importance of educating our young people so that they, we can identify that, what that looks like, domestic violence, teenage violence, to, for parents to be educated on this because sometimes we'll think things were just, oh, that's just cute, or they didn't mean to do that. But real recognizing what those signs are so that as an adult, our young people will not hopefully be going down the same path because we have to start to curb it somewhere. So I thank you for the work that you're doing. And it really is, it's a sad situation that we have to be having this conversation this evening, but I'm so thankful that we have places like APDS and all the other wonderful nonprofit organizations like yours to be able to help people when they're in need. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And for my next resolution, I am going to ask Fran Frazier from the founder of Rise Sister Rise, and she certainly can bring up, can bring up the young ladies with you if you'll. And this resolution is Resolution 283X. It's to recognize and celebrate October the 11th of 2019 as the International Day of the Girl in the city of Columbus. Whereas the concept of the International Day of the Girl first began as a part of the World Conference on Women in Beijing, China, which was held in 1995. This conference was a catalyst of change as it allowed countries to unanimously adopt the Beijing Declaration and Platform for Action, which at that time was the most progressive blueprint for advancing the rights of women and girls in the world as it specifically called out the rights of girls. Whereas the United Nations General Assembly adopted Resolution 66170 on December the 19th of 2011, declaring October the 11th as the International Day of the Girl, recognizing the rights, the rights of girls and the unique challenges facing girls around the world. Whereas the International Day of the Girl focused attention on the need to address challenges girls face by promoting the empowerment of girls and the fulfillment of their human rights. Adolescent girls have the right to a safe, educated, and healthy life, not only during these critical formative years, but also as they mature into women. It is believed that with the effective support during the adolescent years, girls have the potential to change the world. It is believed that with, with the effective support and during the adolescent years, it can change the world, both as empowered girls of today and tomorrow's workers, mothers, entrepreneurs, mentors, household heads, and political leaders. This investment in realizing the power of adolescent girls upholds their rights and promises in more equitable and prosperous future, one in which half of humanity is an equal partner to solving the problems of climate change, political conflict, economic growth, disease prevention, and global sustainability. Whereas the theme for the 2019 International Day of the Girl will be Girl Force, Unscripted and Unstoppable, a platform of action with nine indicators and action items for girls, which include eliminating all forms of discrimination against girls, eliminating negative cultural attitudes and practices against girls, promoting and protecting the rights of girls, and increasing awareness regarding their needs and potential, eliminating discrimination of girls in education, skills development, and training, eliminating discrimination against girls in health and nutrition, eliminating the economic exploitation of child labor and protecting young girls at work, eradicating violence against girls, promoting awareness for girls with respect for their participation in social, economic, and political life, and strengthening the role of family and improving the status of girls. Whereas the 2030 United Nations Agenda for Sustainable Development, which will be adopted by world leaders, which was adopted in 2015, adopted 17 sustainable development goals, embodying a sustainable roadmap for progress, aspiring to leave no one behind, achieving gender equity and empowerment for women, which is integral to true justice, inclusion, and sustainability. These goals will create a shared environment for future generations. Whereas Girls' Force, Unscripted and Unstoppable, International Day of the Girl, will be celebrated and commemorate the achievements by and with and for girls since the Beijing Declaration and Platform for Action, which was the first effort recognizing the rights of women and girls as human rights. Whereas Girls continue to break through boundaries and barriers posed by stereotypes and exclusion, including barriers directed at children with disabilities and girls from marginalized communities, proving that girls can become entrepreneurs, innovators, initiators of global movements, creating a world that is relevant for them and girls for future generations. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council does hereby recognize the theme Girl Force, Unscripted and Unstoppable, and celebrate October the 11th of 2019 as the International Day of the Girl in the city of Columbus. I move for adoption. Thank you.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson. President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. The floor is now yours, Ms. Fran Frazier.
President Harden, dear Councilmember Tyson and members of council. We are really excited. The girls are nervous. I'm nervous too. This past Saturday, 38 girls with the Support of Rise Sister Rise and the Women's Fund of Central Ohio, funded by the Adam Board, met to talk about exactly what the proclamation for the International Day of the Girl is about. The girls met to talk about what is it like to be a diverse teen in the city of Columbus? How do we handle the racial and ethnic tensions in our communities and our schools? How do girls feel about the way people talk about them, or talk about their language or their skin color? The girls also talked about what kind of things can we literally do? Because the theme of the event on Saturday was girls who want to change the world. And then the girls were asked to come up with literally action steps. 22 girls out of 38 signed on to be a part of an action committee. 17 of those girls are here tonight, representing over 10 different countries and many different languages in our city. We are really, really excited about what these girls came up with. They want more political activism for teenage girls. So the event was for girls ages 13 to 18. Almost every group said that they wanted to have a conversation with adult men and women in our city about the issues that they're concerned about, and they want to be listened to. The girls also said that they want more girl involvement in all the things that are going on in our city. But they also want more opportunity to literally have the kind of conversations that they had on Saturday. So we're meeting in two weeks to develop our action agenda. You will be hearing from these girls. And we're just really proud of girls who can step up like this. Hardly any of the girls knew each other. The event, I will tell you this, that the event was planned by the Black Girl Think Tank of Rise Sister Rise. Kelly Shivers and Tina Jenkins are the two co-chairs of our Black Girl Think Tank. And Kelly and another one of our think tank members, Aaliyah Horton, both said, we need to have conversations with girls who don't look like us. We need to find out what they're thinking. And so the event on Saturday was pretty historic then, literally bringing all these girls together. The mental health campaign of the think tank is, I am good enough. And it really is about all the things that get in the way of girls not feeling good about themselves. Colorism, body shaming, the fact that in most communities, it's really difficult to talk about LGBTQ plus issues. So that's one of their issues. Bullying is an issue. Teen depression is an issue. And not having the right kind of conflict resolution skills to handle conflict when it comes up. So those are the six major areas that the think tank has decided really need to be discussed. And so what came up on Saturday are many of those same issues again. So thank you very, very much. We look forward to reporting back to you at some point on what the girls have come up with. And if it's okay with you, I would like for the girls just to say their name, what school they go to, if that's all right with you. All right, thank you.
Say yes. Let's start.
Hello, my name is Kelly Shivers. I'm a junior and I attend Licking Heights High School. I'm very happy for being here and thank you for inviting me.
Hello, my name is Natina Jenkins. I'm a senior and I go to the Arts and College Preparatory Academy. Thank you for having me and I'm happy to be here.
My name's Tendai. I'm an eighth grader at Big Walnut Middle School and I'm very happy to be here.
What school?
Big Walnut Middle School.
Hello. Hello, my name is Tendai. I go to Westerville North and I'm a sophomore. I'm very happy to be here. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ale Hampton. I'm a freshman at Pickerington North High School and I'm just really excited to be here. Thank you.
Girls, use the voice that you used on Saturday.
Yeah, use those outdoor.
Hi, my name is Lauren Robinson and I'm a senior at the Arts and College Preparatory Academy and I'm very happy to be here. Thank you for having us.
Hi, my name is Isabella Camilla. I go to New Albany Middle School and I'm very happy to be here.
Hello, my name is Elena Bautista. I'm a senior at the Southwestern Career Academy and I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lily Incorporated Morgan and I'm in eighth grade and I intend Pickerington Lakeview.
Hello, my name is Samantha Hodge. I'm an 11th grader at Gahanana Winkin High School and I'm glad to be here.
Hello, my name is Marina Camilla. Hello, my name is Marina Camilla and I'm a seventh grader. I attend New Albany Middle School and I am happy to be here.
Hi, my name is Andrea. I'm a freshman and I go to Central Crossing High School. I'm happy to be here.
So happy and nervous.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth. I go to Woodwood Park at Walden and I'm happy to be here.
Hi, I'm Nicolette and I go to CPFA, which is called Columbus Preparatory Fitness Academy and I'm happy to be here.
Hello, my name is Hanan Abdallah. I go to Metro Early College High School and I'm thankful to be here.
Hi, my name is Brianna. I go to Arts Impact Middle School and thank you for having me here.
Hello, my name is Puspa Acharya and I go to Livingston High School and I'm happy to be here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fran. And I also have a resolution for you, but I also have certificates for all the girls that participated in Saturday's programming. And thank you for your work. And again, and Fran's also the co-chair of our Commission on Black Girls. And just, I'm just so thankful that you are, you know, working with the diversity of girls. And this is really the International Day of the Girl. This is certainly just to look out and see. This is certainly just to look out and see all the individuals that are here representing ten countries. That's what this is all about. Thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Tyson. I have one final resolution. And at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Morgan Hughes and the folks with Save the Crew Movement. I was reminded that I also should include Mr. Edward Johnson in that, who worked behind the scenes as part of the movement to come down as well. But I have zero two seven seven X dash twenty nineteen is to declare October 12th, 2019, Save, in past tense, the Crew Day in Columbus, and to commend the Save the Crew Movement for its efforts. On March, on October 17th, 2017, the former investor operator and chairperson of the Columbus Crew Soccer Club, he that shall not be named, announced his intention to relocate our team. Five days later, over two thousand Crew fans gathered at City Hall, showing the world that the effort to save the Crew had just begun. One year later, on October 12th, 2018, the Haslam and Edwards family announced their intention to purchase the Crew and keep the team in Columbus and are breaking ground on a new downtown soccer-specific stadium and a revamp of the Moffrey Stadium into a community sports park for the benefit of all the residents of our community. And the real important part about this, and why it is worth recognizing and worth pausing to celebrate, is that what the Save the Crew Movement meant for Columbus is that it showed our can-do spirit. On that day, when the owner said that he was taking this team away from us, there was not anyone, not anyone in this city, not anyone in this building, not anyone around the country, who thought that today could be possible. And so I think it is worth celebrating, not just a team, not just a game, not just a sport, and certainly not just infrastructure and a stadium, or not even the $1 billion of development that will come to our city. But what we should be celebrating and what is worth recognizing is that in Columbus, we do the bigger things, we do the harder things, and we win. And I'm so excited about today. I'm so excited that on October 12th, from here on out, it's going to be a Save the Crew Day in Columbus. And so with that, there are so many people that were a part of that, councilmembers that are here, city attorney, Zach Klein was council president on that fateful day in 2017. Before we turn it over, do any of my colleagues have any comments? President, or city attorney? Councilmember?
It's just great to see such a grassroots effort, you know, come to fruition. You know, just watching every step of the way and talking with many of you throughout the organization of this and the efforts that you gave, put forth. I mean, really to watch fans transform the narrative for this city, it's incredible. And it's applauded. It's a sports story that I think will resonate throughout the nation, across all sports. And to think that it happened right here in Columbus, Ohio, is something really special. So thank you for all that you've done. It's exciting to be able to recognize October 12th as the Save the Crew Day. And certainly, we continue to look forward to your advocacy and your support as we move into a new era for the Crew. So thank you.
With that, we're going to turn it over to you, Morgan. President Harden, members of council, thank you so much for having us back for what seems like the 1,996th time. It keeps getting better. When I see the faces of so many advocates and allies, I can't help but think where we were on that first day that we came here. We were just looking to organize a movement that would try to prevent the destruction of our community. And when you compare where we are today to where we were on that first day, the results are beyond our wildest dreams. And I think that the global soccer community and indeed the entire city of Columbus is better because of that movement. I think, I speak for all of us when I say that I never thought when I was a kid coming to this room on a field trip, that the city that I was born and raised in would dedicate an entire calendar day to something my friends and I did. It's truly, truly an honor. So on behalf of all of us at the Save the Crew Movement and Crew fans, both inside Columbus and around the world, I humbly accept this honor. I thank you all, and I look forward to seeing you all out of Moffrey Stadium next year after a very, very brief offseason to support and cheer on our Columbus Crew. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. So be resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that October 12th be declared Save the Crew Day. Are there any questions or comments? I move for passage, or adoption. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Reemy Tyson. President Harden.
Adopted.
Are there any comments from city attorney, from the auditor's office? Seeing none, and are there any requests from the members of council for the removal of ordinance or resolutions from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have the motion to waive reading of the title of the thirty-day legislation? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Reemy Tyson. President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record ordinance numbers of thirty-day legislation on tonight's agenda?
Finance Committee ordinance is twenty-three seventy-three, twenty-four sixteen, twenty-four nineteen, twenty-four forty-two, twenty-four forty-five, and twenty-four eighty-five dash twenty nineteen. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance twenty-three sixty dash twenty nineteen. Public Safety Committee ordinance twenty-four seventy-five dash twenty nineteen. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is twenty-three seventy-two, twenty-three eighty-six, twenty-four forty-four, twenty-five oh five dash twenty nineteen. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance twenty-three seventy-four dash twenty nineteen. Economic Development Committee ordinance is twenty-five oh four, twenty-five oh nine, twenty-five ten, twenty-five eleven, and twenty-five sixty-one dash twenty nineteen.
We have no speakers for the first reading portion of our agenda. The following ordinance now appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those to the record?
Resolutions of Expression two seventy-three X and two eighty X dash twenty nineteen. Finance Committee ordinance is twenty-two ninety, twenty-two ninety-four, twenty-three fifty-nine, twenty-four oh one, twenty-four oh four, twenty-four oh five, twenty-four twenty, twenty-four thirty-six, twenty-four forty-three, twenty-four seventy-nine, twenty-four eighty-eight, twenty-four ninety-seven dash twenty nineteen. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is twenty-three thirty-two and twenty-three thirty-seven dash twenty nineteen. Public Safety Committee ordinance is twenty-three ninety, twenty-three ninety-one, and twenty-five hundred dash twenty nineteen. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is twenty-two sixty-three, twenty-two seventy-two and twenty-two ninety-two dash twenty nineteen. Neighborhoods Committee ordinance two-five-six-four dash twenty nineteen. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolutions two sixty-six X, two seventy X dash twenty nineteen, and ordinances twenty-three forty-one, twenty-three fifty, twenty-three sixty-eight, twenty-three seventy-one, twenty-three eighty, twenty-three eighty-four, twenty-four eighty-six, twenty-four eighty-seven, twenty-four ninety, and twenty-five nineteen dash twenty nineteen. Housing Committee ordinance two-three-nine-five, two-three-nine-six, two-four-seven-eight dash twenty nineteen. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee ordinance is twenty-two ninety-eight, twenty-three seventy-seven, twenty-three seventy-nine, twenty-three eighty-seven dash twenty nineteen. Economic Development Committee Resolution two sixty-eight X dash twenty nineteen. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is twenty-four thirteen, twenty-four eighteen, twenty-four twenty-two, twenty-four fifty-nine, twenty-four sixty-one, twenty-five oh six, twenty-five oh seven, and twenty-five oh eight dash twenty nineteen. And appointments from Mayor's Office numbered A zero, one sixty, one sixty-one, one sixty-two, one sixty-three, one sixty-four, one sixty-five, one sixty-six, one sixty-seven, one sixty-eight, one sixty-nine, one seventy, one seventy-one, one seventy-two, one seventy-three, one seventy-four, one seventy-five, one seventy-six, and one seventy-eight dash twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda. That's Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council. Mr. Wilkins is speaking on ordinance twenty-four seventy-eight.
Let's hear your voice, Mr. Wilkins, a resident of the North London area, just a resident. I'm against C A thirty-eight, twenty-four seventy-eight, two thousand and nineteen. First of all, I just want to say, there's seven things why I'm against this property at twenty-seven twenty-two. So on, they call for Cassidy, somewhere along Cassidy and Fifth in Cleveland. But I just want to understand, you know, we do all this land bank stuff again, and there's no opportunity for resident involvement that live around certain vacant property can take ownership of these things. We also talk about silver housing and things, and silver houses that can be turned in, you know, idolized this money not to be used for demolition. I had to run home to pull up this document of the Franklin County Auditor's website. A beautiful home, three bedroom, one bathroom, was built in nineteen sixty-three. This is what I got from the website. We also talk about transfer history, okay, the value of the history of this property of twenty-one thousand, twenty-three thousand. We also talk about the city land bank and the city community investment. Let me say that again, Community Investment Corporation. When I pulled this up, there shouldn't be no terms why the city had owned this property. It doesn't give residents that live in this community opportunity to buy it. I know we talked about a few years of a dollar amount houses. Won't we start looking at some other ideas for $500 at the starting bid of these homes? Also, we want to look at resident. Why does residents can't get a hold of this? To turn these houses into some creativity ideas for students that live in communities, trouble youth development. Why, won't we get some trade skills back in this community, construction, drywall, and painting? This is what I don't see in my community, all over the state of Ohio. I had to pull this up through the Franklin County Auditor's website once again. Community land bank, you know, why that the city had to own these properties more than a couple of times, why they just sit vacant and abandoned? We ought to need to do something now, add some creativity ideas. Let's stop looking at demolition. Let's look at some other ideas that residents had some ideas for other ideas for these properties and commercial vitalizing. And let's stop tearing down. Let's look at some other ideas. Let's go to the community of resident to see what they want to offer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, and thank you for your advocacy. Are there any questions or comments for the directors or on any other parts of the consent portion action of the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion of approval of these items? Thinking of the consent? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Reemy Tyson. President Harden.
Consent agenda items are passed. We will now proceed with the second reading of thirty-day entable emergency legislation. First committee to come before council is Finance, chaired by President Proton Brown. The floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. First, in Finance, tonight, we have ordinance twenty-four ninety-one dash twenty nineteen to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with Proline Electric Incorporated for upgrades related to the Department of Technology West Data Center, to authorize the transfer of $1,305,280 within the Information Services Bond Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $1,305,280 from the Information Services Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. This funding is for various upgrades to the electrical systems at the Department of Technology West Data Center. These are necessary to ensure uninterrupted and equal distribution of power throughout the facility. Formal bids for this project were solicited, and Proline Electric was selected as the lowest responsive bidder. Emergency action is being considered so that these upgrades can begin without delay. Seeing no questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Reemy Tyson. President Harden.
Passed.
May I move to Recreation and Parks, Council President? In Recreation and Parks, we have ordinance twenty-three thirty-four dash twenty nineteen to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission and accept a grant in the amount of $900,000 for the Dicart Run Protection Project, to authorize the appropriation of $900,000 in the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund, to authorize the transfer of $300,000 in matching funds within the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund, to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget, to authorize the city attorney to spend city funds to acquire and accept in good faith certain fee simple title and lesser real estate located in the vicinity of East Broad Street and Waggoner Road, and contract for associated professional services in order to timely complete the acquisition of the property, to authorize the expenditure of $1,200,000 from the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund and Voted Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is for the Dicart Run Protection Project, which is located on the city's far east side. The stream is a main tributary of Blacklet Creek, and this site is one of the largest remaining forested tracts in the entire Blacklet Creek watershed. The project will authorize the purchase of forty-one point five acres of additional land adjacent to a Recreation and Parks natural area along a ravine of Dicart Run, bringing the total conservation area to more than fifty acres. The project receives support from the Far East Commission, Friends of Blacklet Creek, and the landowner. The conservation and preservation of natural sites is critical to building a healthy, growing city for the long haul, and it is a core mission of our Recreation and Parks Department. Our investment to acquire and preserve this land not only benefits water quality and natural wildlife habitat, but it also creates more opportunities for our residents' health, recreation, and quality of life. Thank you to Director Rakoski and his staff for continuing to make this important conservation work a priority in a department with many and myriad priorities. The opportunities to be, or the properties to be acquired with these funds are listed for sale, and we are considering emergency action here tonight so the department can acquire them before they are sold to another party. The grantor also requires a completion date of July 31st next year. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Reemy Tyson. President Harden.
Passed.
Finally, in Recreation and Parks, I have ordinance twenty-three thirty-nine dash twenty nineteen to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into an initial five-year lease with MCNCLC Company to provide space for the operation of a senior center, to authorize the appropriation of $1,45,839.46 from the unappropriated balance of the Special Income Tax Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $1,45,839.46 from the Special Income Tax Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Department of Recreation and Parks has leased space in the Morse Center Shopping Center for twenty years for use as the Gill Center Recreation Center. This new lease is for an initial term of five years and includes a renewal option for an additional five-year term. Emergency action is being considered to allow for commencement of the new lease and to meet the schedule outlined in the lease terms. Seeing no questions, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Reemy Tyson. President Harden.
Passed.
President Harden, that's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dorans. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. In Public Utilities, we have one piece of legislation this evening, ordinance number two-two-four-one dash twenty nineteen, to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the Williams Benham Homes Sewage Treatment Systems Elimination Project. The city's acquisition of this real estate will help make, improve, or repair sewer improvements in the area of Williams Road, Benham Road, and Chrock Road. The city attorney has served notice on all the property owners of this project's public purpose and necessity. However, the city attorney was unable to either locate some of the property owners or agree with some of them in good faith, hence the need for this ordinance. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Reemy Tyson. President Harden.
Passed.
May I move on to the technology committee?
Please.
Thank you. We have one piece of legislation also this evening, ordinance number two-four-six-five dash twenty nineteen, to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer $340,391.93 from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Information Services taxable debt fund, to authorize the director of Development of Technology to enter into a contract with Harris Heviger Excavating Inc. for the installation of fiber optic cabling at 19 locations to continue linking together the city's fiber optic pathway, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,3,629.3 from the Information Services Division Capital Improvement Bond Fund and to declare emergency. Upon the adoption of the broadband strategic plan in 2007, the city's aggressive expansion of its fiber optic network has provided the backbone for a number of innovations to support quality of life and business in the city, and provides for cost-saving and efficiencies to deliver a variety of services. Fiber optic cabling will be installed at 19 fire and police substations throughout the city. These projects link together locations that need to have the fiber pathways joined together to enhance the circuit access. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, President Harden, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service Committee, that is chaired by Councilmember Favor. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance number 2204-2019 to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget, to authorize the transfer of funds within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to appropriate funds within the Smart City Grant Fund, to authorize the city's chief innovation officer to execute a contract modification with HNTB Ohio relative to the Smart City Challenge, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2 million from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and up to $2 million from the Smart City Grant, to pay for the contract modification and to declare an emergency. This ordinance represents a planned contract modification with HNTB Ohio to continue its professional services work for the Smart City Challenge. Transportation projects in the scope of work include smart mobility hubs, event parking management, and the multimodal trip planning application and comment payment system. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 2361-2019 to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of funds within the Streets and Highways Improvement Non-Bond Fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,934,790.5 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and up to $1,117,419.18 from the Street and Highway Improvement Non-Bond Fund for the pedestrian safety improvements Wilson Road Shared Use Path Project and to declare an emergency. Director Gallagher, can you give any additional detail or notes about this project?
President Harden, Chair Favor, other members of council. Apologize for that, I was having a microphone issue there. This project is in coordination with the Franklin County Engineers Office. They are reconstructing the bridge, and then the project also will add a turn lane for the vehicular traffic. The few things that I wanted to add for this project is not only is it a shared use path along Wilson Road, but at the southern end of the project, there will be a new crosswalk and pedestrian refuge island that will be constructed, that will connect at the intersection of Wilson Road and Fremont Street, connecting the West Gate neighborhood to the park and trail. And then a future Rec and Parks project will connect the shared use path with direct access to the Camp Chase Trail. So hopefully you'll continue to hear from us, that as we're doing these projects, we're trying to connect into the trail system and into neighborhoods, so we're starting to see connections rather than just projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I'd move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance number 2376-2019 to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser realist property interest necessary to timely complete intersection improvements Central College Road at Harlem Road Project. The city intends to make, improve, or repair certain public right-of-way by completing the intersection improvements Central College Road at the Harlem Road Project. Through the real estate acquisition in the vicinity of Central College Road and Harlem Road, the city will be able to fully execute those improvements, which will be open to the public. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I'd move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 2494-2019 to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget, to appropriate funds within the Smart City Grant Fund, to authorize the city's chief innovation officer to execute a contract modification with the Accenture relative to the Smart City Challenge, to authorize the expenditure of up to $4,081,749 from the Smart City Grant Fund and from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to pay for the contract modification and to declare an emergency. This ordinance represents a planned contract modification with Accenture to continue its professional services with the Smart City Challenge. This contract will allow for the completion of design and implementation of the Smart Columbus Operating System, a data management platform. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I'd move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
And last, we have ordinance number 2629-2019 to authorize an appropriation of $10,000 within the Neighborhood's Initiative Subfund of the General Fund to Columbus City Council for the purchase of reflectors and to declare an emergency. This ordinance allows Columbus City Council to purchase and distribute reflectors to Columbus City School students. In the weeks since the tragic death of 6th grader Elizabeth Robertson Rutland, the City of Columbus and Columbus City Schools are working together to increase coordination efforts to holistically look at safe routes to schools for students and parents. We understand that these reflectors are not a complete solution to this problem, but they are a first step towards making students walking to school and bus stops more visible for drivers. Creating safe routes to schools must be a full effort that includes not only improving our street and sidewalk infrastructure, but also must include safety education and transit coordination amongst the city and local school district. I also like to ask Mr. Edward Johnson with the Columbus Public Health to speak about safe routes to school and its efforts from a public health perspective.
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Favor. Columbus Public Health is working to protect the health and safety of all of our students through our Safe Routes to School program, which encompasses two types of projects in conjunction with our partners at Public Service, Columbus City Schools, and Council. The first is infrastructure projects, and the second are non-infrastructure projects, which include education, encouragement, and enforcement activities to affect student and driver behavior. This work is guided by the Districtwide School Travel Plan that was adopted jointly by Council and the Columbus City School Board in 2015. And so, we're very happy to see all of the partners engaging, and we see this as part of being safe and being seen by adding these reflectors to that toolbox of non-infrastructure projects, and so we're very encouraged and happy to be supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Brown?
So as soon as they come in, I'll actually bring them to a council meeting so everyone can see what they look like. But it's about this big, and it can clip on to a backpack, or to a bicycle, or to an article of clothing like a jacket.
Awesome.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I can't underscore enough that we do not, we know this is not a solution to the problem in its entirety, but it was important for me to continue to lead this charge so that our residents know that each of us are fighting each and every day to make sure our students are safe as they walk to school. With that, I would move for passage.
Thank you for your leadership. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, and that's all we have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is Economic Development. Councilmember Remy chairs, Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Tonight I have ordinance number 255X-2019 to accept the recommendations of the 2019 Columbus Tax Incentive Review Council regarding the continuation, modification, or cancellation of all property tax incentives based on the evaluation of reporting year 2018. I'd like to throw the mic over to the director to talk a little bit more about this ordinance.
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Remy, members of city council. Every year, we want to make sure that the agreements that we enter into on an economic development basis are being met by the parties, and what we have found is, in an effort to hold them accountable, we continue to exceed the job creation as well as the investment in the community that was initially promised as part of the deal. So, our Tax and Center Review Council in 2019 found that we created over 2,600 jobs with an investment of over $978 million in real property improvements, which created $188 million in new annual payroll, and we also retained over 7,900 jobs. There are a couple of projects that we continue to work with the recipient to understand where they are in their commitments, and we will be back to city council if we have any modifications on that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Thank you very much, Director, appreciate the input on that. If there are no questions, I'll move to amend as submitted to the clerk by voice.
Please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance is passed.
And that's all I have this evening in economic development. With your permission, Council President Harden, I'd like to move on to administration.
Please.
Thank you very much. Tonight I have ordinance number 2587-2019 to authorize the appropriation of $15,000 within the Job Growth Subfund for the Small Business Training Services Program, to authorize and direct the director of the Department of Human Resources to implement the Small Business Training Services Program and to declare an emergency. Director Brandon, could I have you speak to this particular ordinance?
Sure. Good evening, President Harden, Chairman Remy, members of council. Thank you for supporting the Department of Human Resources and our Citywide Training and Development Office. This funding allows our office and the city as a whole to support local small businesses, and at this time, our training manager, Drina Kirkland, is going to talk about the impact that these dollars have on the small businesses. Thank you.
Council President Harden, Councilmember Remy, thank you for having me. I just want to express our gratitude for your continued support of this program that allows small businesses to deliver training, relevant training, to their employees that they may not have been able to afford. Since the inception of this particular program, we have had 128 different small businesses take advantage of the training, which equates to 766 different courses. They have really given us positive feedback. They have shared stories of how it has impacted their businesses and helped them to grow. Some of the popular courses, of course, Microsoft Office, Excel, Word, PowerPoint, business writing, grammar, communications, and marketing. And I would like to encourage any small businesses listening to this broadcast to please look for our training, free of charge to you. You can go to the city's website at www.columbus.gov/humanresources/citywidetraining, or you can call our office at 614-645-8294. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your efforts. Of course, our small businesses in our community are a backbone to what makes Columbus so great, so we appreciate the opportunity to provide this training. I know you guys have done a wonderful job, and we certainly look forward to much more success moving forward, so appreciate your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Are there any questions or comments this evening for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row. Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you very much. That's all I have this evening in administration.
Can I start? Yep. Next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Service Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
I have ordinance number 2333-2019 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health for the Drug Overdose Prevention Grant 2020 in the amount of $140,000, to authorize the appropriation of $140,000 to the Health Department and the Health Department's Grant Fund, and to declare an emergency. This money will be used, to use as a coalition-building grant, which will have increased community impact as it focuses on the continued work of the Columbus and Franklin County Addiction Plan. In addition to defining the strategic planning of this plan, there will be strategies with, which will include public awareness campaign for education about fentanyl and non-opiate drugs, and enhancing services with SafePoint. Also, a needs assessment and a target awareness campaign will impact those in areas where substance misuse and abuse are most prevalent. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2398-2019 to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget, to authorize and direct the Department of Development to enter into agreements with Southeast Inc. and Huckleberry House in order to assist in the repair of emergency shelters for the homeless individuals and families, to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between projects within the Development taxable Bond Fund, and to authorize expenditure of $106,289 from the Development taxable Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. The repairs for these organizations will include, are not limited to, bathroom renovations, repairs to chimney, roof and fire escape, and other life safety items. If there are no questions or comments, I now move for passage.
Please. Call the row. Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The final ordinance in Health and Human Services this evening is ordinance number 2480-2019 to authorize the Board of Health to enter into new contracts or modify existing contracts to reallocate funds previously appropriated and encumbered by ordinance 913-2019, and any additional funds awarded to the Columbus Public Health for services allowable under the Ryan White Part A program for the provision of outpatient ambulatory, non-medical case management, medical case management, mental health services, housing services, and emergency financial assistance for persons living with HIV or AIDS in central Ohio with vendors that are identified by Columbus Public Health as qualified to provide services allowable under the grant and that meet the federal requirements for this funding, to authorize the Board of Health to accept any additional rewards for the Ryan White Part A HIV Grant Program, and to authorize the appropriation of any additional funds for the Ryan White Part A HIV Grant Program, to authorize the city auditor to transfer appropriations between object levels for the Ryan White Part A HIV Care Grant Program and to waive competitive bidding of the Columbus City codes. In 2018, the Ryan White Part A program for the central Ohio area served over 2,400 people living with HIV through several programs, including outpatient ambulatory, medical care, mental health, medical case management, early intervention services, housing services, non-medical case management, emergency financial assistance, and medical transportation. The purpose of this ordinance is to request authorization to reallocate the Ryan White Part A HIV Emergency Relief Grant Program funds, and to allocate any additional funding awarded to Columbus Public Health to modify and increase current service contracts, order entered to contracts with other vendors that are identified by Columbus Public Health. This ordinance requests a waiver of competitive bidding of provisions code, City Code, Chapter 329, to the extent that they are applicable. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please. Call the row. Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you.
Passed.
That's all I have in my committee this evening. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you.
Passed.
That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Seeing no further, council, if you would, please.
It's called the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Council. Second. Please call the row. Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden. Pass. Regular meeting number 49 will now come to order. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
So moved.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
We now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee and all members serve on it. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you. We have ordinance number 2452-2019. I guess I should say this. We don't have any speakers, but I will say this. Beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertain to speaking before council and zoning variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents, three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against a council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. Thank you. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer. I will.
I will.
Thank you. Have ordinance 2452-2019 to rezone 2700 McKinley Avenue, being 2.85 acres located on the east side of McKinley Avenue, 1,650 feet southeast of Westwood Avenue, from the L.A.R.L.D. Limited Apartment Residential District to P.U.D.A. Planned Unit Development District. The applicant is 2700 McKinley Properties LLC, care of Dave Perry. Proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval. The West Sciota area commission's recommendation is 702. If there are no questions or comments, then I first wave second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed. Waived.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2457-2019, to rezone 5438 North Hamilton Road, being .99 acres located on the east side of Hamilton Road, 900 feet north of Thompson Road, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Brandon Garnett. The proposed use is a retail bank or commercial development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Northland Community Council's recommendation is approval, 1401. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I first move to amend to emergency.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
All right, the next ordinance is 2467-2019, to amend 41-2019, passed February the 11th, 2019, for property located at 5850 Sunbury Road, by repealing Section 3 and replacing it with a new Section 3, thereby modifying the limitation text to include a commitment to the city's Pay As We Grow program. This is an ordinance amendment. The proposed use is for an apartment complex. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Northland Community Council's recommendation is approval. So I first move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2469-2019, to amend ordinance 2297-87, passed November the 2nd of 1987, for property located at 725 Bellows Avenue, by repealing Section 3 and replacing it with a new section, thereby modifying the limitation text as it pertains to fencing and access provisions. This is an ordinance amendment. Proposed use of this is an office building. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Franklinton Area Commission's recommendation is approval. If there are no questions or comments by my colleagues, I first move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Waive.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2476-2019, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3356.03(c)(4) permitted uses, 3312.27 parking setback line, and 3356.11(c)(4) district setback lines of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 2455 and 2475 Bryce Road, to allow a contractor's office and associated storage uses with the reduced development standards in the (c)(4) commercial district. The applicant is David Hodge, attorney. The proposed use is a contractor's office and associated storage uses. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Far East Area Commission's recommendation is approval, 5 to 0. If there are no questions or comments, I first move to amend to emergency.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The final ordinance in zoning this evening is 2477-2019, to rezone 3800 South Hamilton Road, being .51 acres located at the east side of South Hamilton Road, 490 feet north of Hamilton Square Boulevard, from the LC4 Limited Commercial District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Booze Development Group, Inc., care of Robert Booze. The proposed use is a drive-in restaurant. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Greater Southeast Area Commission's recommendation is approval, 6 to 0. If there are no questions or comments, I move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That concludes the zoning agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Seeing no further business coming for the zoning committee, may I get a motion for adjourn?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We'll...